Good afternoon. I'd like to call the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five School Board Work Session to Order. First, we have a report from the School Board Audit and Finance Committee from Dr. Perkins.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Murray, and Board Members. My name is Teri Perkins, and I'm Chair of the Audit and Finance Advisory Committee. So I'm here today to report on activities we've done in the past year and recommendations for going forward. We have five seats on this committee, one from each district, as you know. Two will be filled soon, I think one very soon. Joining me currently on the committee are Mr. Decker and Dr. Mallory. The stated purpose of this group is to assist the board in its oversight responsibilities for budgeting, financial reporting, internal control systems, and audit processes. We meet about nine times per year to discuss those issues and to hear presentations from staff and to receive reports and information. This year, we again spent time hearing updates on relevant and timely matters that relate to audit and finance. These included the continued work on the Enterprise Resource Planning System and information that is also provided to the board on things like budget needs and development, our division plans and successes. We also hear updates from the Chesterfield County staff that include the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline updates, audit plans and completions, and if recommendations were implemented. We discuss finance-related matters that come up annually or occasionally. And this year, those included Student Activity Funds Report, information from the county's Director of Procurement, updates of the SRP, non-resident tuition, and some federal funding information. Of course, audits constitute a significant amount of our time and attention. This past year, there were audits done by the Chesterfield Internal Audit Department that fell on the school side that included being on a school attendance, on volunteers in our schools, and an audit on the procurement and credit card processes. We appreciated hearing the detailed manner in which these audits were done and what the findings were. We learned of recommendations that come from those findings and what departments within CCPS must implement some sort of action or change. Recommendations from the audits noted here involve many CCPS staff, including divisions, departments, or offices of school social work, equity and student support, safety and security, and finance. Some recommendations can be implemented fairly quickly, for instance, within this school year. Others would take, would be more complex work and might take through 2027 to complete. Based on discussions we've had through the year, we would respectfully suggest a couple of areas for the board's attention and financial support. First, the ERP is a tool that can solve many division challenges by integrating processes, automating tasks, and reducing reliance on paper documentation, among other things. So we see the supreme value of this software and recommend not only full support for the first phase of implementation that is coming soon, but continued attention to what CCPS's finance department deems necessary for the ERP to evolve into a tool that could improve efficiency in even more areas. Staffing to match the needs of the finance issues connected to ERP is vital. Secondly, as a group that learns of successes and challenges within the district in terms of student needs and budgetary matters, we continue to advocate for an emphasis on raises for our teacher and support staff. It must meet the, the needs of the moment in which we find ourselves, given that there is a teacher shortage, and it is real with dire consequences. Teachers have choices, both in the local area and beyond, when they are deciding where to serve our students. The AFC hears regularly of the many pools on dollars in our school division. So we understand how budget dollars must be spread, often too thinly, across so many needs. Yet, we, like most stakeholders, realize that the mission and vision of our changing school division is dependent upon our teachers and support staff. So we urge the board to make competitive staff raises a priority in your upcoming budget season. I'll close by relaying our thanks to Bob Meister and Cara Durden and their teams. These skilled leaders in the division and county provide our committee with important information that allows us to view the work of audit and finance and learn more about how CCPS could be even better. Sometimes teams like these work behind the scenes in school districts, but we know that there is no possible way in which an effective organization could survive without them. So we appreciate their professionalism and hard work. Finally, I would stress that the committee is open to ways in which we can serve you better. So we would welcome your suggestions for future meeting topics at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins. Board members, is there any discussion? Mr. Peronto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Perkins, thank you very much for that presentation. Has the committee put together any type of letter or request to the state in regards to J-LARK?
Our committee has not done that. We were very interested in hearing the J-LARK study. And it may well be that the members are open to that. I'm happy to take that back.
Sure, and I appreciate that. The reason I'm asking is when we're talking about deficits, the state years has been withholding. If we had received that money, I, I think some of the items on your list would not be on your list. Maybe even bigger items would be on there. So that's not to deflect, but it is a reality of what we're facing. And that's why I was wondering if the committee had considered reaching out to, to the state on that.
I will definitely take that back. We were interested when Mr. Meister talked to us about that J-LARK study at one of our meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins. Thank you for your leadership on the AFC Committee and for all the other members on the, on the team. And we look forward to having a few new ones join. So thank you so much. Next, we have an update on Gifted Education from Dr. Foil.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Murray. It's good to see y'all. It's great to be here and share some of the cool things that are happening in our school system with you and with our community this evening, or this afternoon. So the Office of Gifted Education truly seeks to grow, engage, and empower all of our students in our division through promoting high-quality instruction and learning experiences in our classrooms. I will share with you today how we are reaching classrooms, supporting student growth, and creating access to opportunities. I will then conclude by sharing some next steps. We've been hard at work supporting rigorous and engaging instruction across our school division. These photos on the slide highlight just a few of the professional learning opportunities that our teachers have participated in this school year to really strengthen and refine their craft. Over the past year, schools across our division have benefited from customized professional learning experiences provided by our office, both for the entire school, faculties, and for specific grade-level teams. These sessions have given teachers practical tools and strategies to enhance their instruction in the classroom and student engagement. One major highlight that I wanted to share with you was TeacherCon 2025. It's our biannual conference open to all teachers in the division. This past summer, around 250 educators attended on their own time because they were eager to learn, collaborate, and grow together. The event featured sessions led by teacher presenters showcasing the high-quality teaching practices that are going on in our division. Our keynote speaker, Dr. Brian Howson, complimented those teacher presenters and inspired participants with a keynote that really encouraged them to create meaningful and engaging experiences in their classrooms. Teachers really left energized with new ideas to bring to their students. In addition, our team has been actively collaborating with teachers across the division to explore new and innovative ways to really meet the diverse needs of our learners. This work includes one-on-one planning sessions, grade-level collaborations, and participation in PLCs. Through these partnerships, teachers are supported in designing engaging lessons, differentiating instruction, and implementing strategies to that enhance classroom practice and elevate the student learning experience. Teachers are also incorporating supplemental literacy slides designed by the Office of Gifted Education as an extension of the open court curriculum materials. These slides are designed to enrich and deepen instruction by offering additional opportunities for differentiation, particularly during tier-two instruction, for students who would benefit from stretching their understanding of the skills taught. Natural time for using these is during workshop. Furthermore, teachers are engaging students with a variety of enriched tasks that are available to them through the curriculum portal. These tasks are aligned with each content area's instructional overview and offer ready-to-use options for our teachers in grades K through eight. Designed to promote high-quality instruction and meaningful student engagement, these tasks also serve a double purpose. They serve as a model of an effective teaching strategy, so they can use that as an example to modify an existing lesson in their classroom as well. As we continue reaching classrooms across the division to support that high-quality instruction, we also remain committed to providing strong programming that meets individual student needs and fosters their growth. Every student has a story. That was a line that I remember learning when I was in teach, becoming a teacher. And it has stuck with me. Each student brings unique strengths to the classroom, their interests, their learning profiles to the classroom. And our Inspire programs offer students shared learning experiences that nurture their talents while developing essential skills such as critical and creative thinking, logic, and metacognition. These programs are designed to complement and enhance the daily classroom instruction, not to be something else that's added on to a teacher's plate. Educators and administrators can choose to implement one or more of these Inspire programs in a classroom, across a grade level, or throughout multiple grades in their school, creating flexible pathways for cultivating student potential in their buildings. Our school-based gifted services support students who demonstrate particular strengths in one or more content areas. These students receive differentiated instruction within the classroom, allowing teachers to extend learning opportunities and challenge students in ways that align with their readiness and interests. For students whose learning needs require a more comprehensive and rigorous approach, we also offer our center-based gifted program in grades three through eight with a, it's a full-time option for these students. It integrates, it is different because it integrates Kaplan's Depth and Complexity Framework as a common language of learning across those grade levels, incorporating interdisciplinary and hallmark curriculum experiences and offers ongoing opportunities for enrichment. The goal is to ensure that students are both challenged and supported in developing their intellectual curiosity and capacity for deeper understanding in those programs. And finally, at the high school level, the students in our division have access to two regional governor schools, which serve as an extension of the exceptional opportunities already available to them in Chesterfield. These programs complement our excellent comprehensive high school offerings, our specialty centers, and expanding career and technical education programs, allowing students to engage in advanced studies alongside peers from across central Virginia. Academic success and enrichment, or ACE, is a, is integral component for the center-based gifted program in our middle schools. It's an elective course, and ACE provides students with meaningful opportunities to deepen their understanding of themselves as learners, to extend their knowledge through directed independent study, serve their communities, and engage in student-driven learning experiences that often go beyond the traditional curriculum. Through this work, students develop leadership skills, strengthen their ability to think critically and creatively, and explore how their individual strengths and challenges contribute to their growth and success. Students participate in independent and collaborative studies involving research, design, and inquiry projects that allow them to pursue their passions and interests in authentic ways. To promote consistency and coherence across the schools, a course framework was collaboratively developed with our ACE teachers. We asked them, what is ACE to you, and how does it work for you, and what is the best way to serve our students? And that is how that collaborative work came about. It includes core enrichment experiences that are common to all CBG sites, along with student-based enrichment experiences that are unique to each school. So it balances, the structure kind of balances the shared expectations across the division with school-level flexibility, ensuring that each ACE class is responsive to the specific needs of the students in that, in that specific school. As seen on the slide, the ACE Core Enrichment Experience follows a developmental progression over time across grade levels. In grade six, students explore what it means to be a gifted learner and examine those characteristics and how they relate to their own experiences. They also develop foundational research skills and conduct a directed independent study aligned with that passion. In seventh grade, students investigate the concept of leadership by, by studying influential leaders and analyzing their impact on the world. They also engage in self-reflection and set personal growth goals, culminating in a presentation that demonstrates their growth and understanding. Eighth-grade students connect brain science research to effective study strategies and learning behaviors. They also design and implement a community service project that allows them to contribute meaningfully to their community. Now, the cool part is at the end of the year, students present their learning and their accomplishments through a little ACE showcase where they share their culminating projects with parents and with the community. By the end of middle school, ACE students leave with a deeper understanding of themselves as learners and leaders and are prepared to make thoughtful, purposeful, purposeful contributions to the world around them. This slide provides a glimpse of the number of students that our programs reach. Our Inspire programs serve over 4,400 students in kindergarten through grade 10. Inspire programs are active in 42 schools and 208 classrooms across the division. We have more than 9,700 students participating in direct gifted services this school year, representing about 15% of the division's total student population. Of these students, approximately 7,000 are served through our school-based gifted programs where they receive differentiated instruction in their areas of strength. This, this group also includes students who are on monitor status. And that's a unique program for students who have demonstrated notable indicators of advanced potential, but who are not yet identified gifted. These students are provided with services for two years to support their growth, and then they're reevaluated for permanent placement. So rather than closing a door, that model creates the opportunity for students to develop and demonstrate their abilities. With this, we also have approximately 2,500 students participating in our center-based gifted program, which provides that full-time rigorous academic experience as well. Finally, 345 students participate in our two regional governor schools, with 129 students attending Appomattox Regional Governor's School for the Arts and Technology, and 216 students attending Maggie L. Walker Governor's School for Government and International Studies. Together, these programs reflect the division's commitment to providing access to advanced learning opportunities and ensuring that every student has the support and challenge they need to reach their full potential. As we look at this, and as we continue to really cultivate and support student growth, we are working closely with school administrators and their teams to expand access to advanced learning opportunities for students. Each year, our division reports this data to the VDOE. And this information helps us reflect on the impact of our collective work in identifying and nurturing student potential. This slide highlights the growth in our identified gifted student population from the 2019-2020 school year through last school year as reported to the VDOE. This, this progress really represents the dedication of our teachers, our administrators, our counselors, who really ensure that students get the opportunity to demonstrate their strengths and talents. Our division continues to build capacity in schools by implementing two things, universal screenings in kindergarten, second grade, and fifth grade. These provide valuable data to help teachers and school teams identify students who may benefit from gifted services, but also can be used to inform their day-to-day instruction. Additionally, we have an identification process that's grounded in research and best practice, and it's designed to be consistent across our schools, yet flexible enough to consider the multiple sources of information that reflect each student's unique learning profile. The collaborative effort that we have between classroom teachers, our school teams, and division staff helps open more doors for students to grow, stretching their thinking, and really engaging them in meaningful, challenging learning experiences. Together, we are expanding access, supporting teachers in the identification process, and creating pathways for students to thrive in challenging and engaging learning environments. As mentioned earlier, our division is proud to provide opportunities to, for students to participate in Appomattox Regional Governor's School. This is commonly referred to as ARGS, and it's located in Petersburg. It offers programs in the visual and performing arts and as well as technology. Each year, the number of available seats for applications varies based on the number of graduating seniors that we have, as well as the annual available budget. On average, our division has offered approximately 25 to 30 seats annually to the highest-ranking applicants in each focus area. The data on this table displays just the number of student applications received each year, as well as the number of rising ninth graders who accepted and who end up attending the school. The total of number of applications and total number of accepted students is listed at the top of each column. And then there's a demographic breakdown of each group. With Maggie L. Walker Governor's School for Government and International Studies, it is located in Richmond, and it provides students with advanced opportunities to study government, global affairs, and related disciplines through rigorous and highly specialized curriculum. Students benefit from learning alongside peers from across central Virginia, engaging in inquiry, research, and leadership experiences that prepare them for future academic and civic successes. Again, the number of seats in, for Chesterfield County applicants does vary each year, again, dependent upon the number of seniors that dependent upon the number of seniors that are graduating, as well as the annual budget. We offer approximately 50 to 60 slots per year to student applicants. Again, this data on this slide displays the number of student applications received each year, the total number of students who have accepted and are attending, as well as the total number of applicants at the top of each column. Now, as we talk about creating access to opportunities and really creating greater access, the opening of Deep Creek Elementary School in western Chesterfield provides an opportunity to realign CBG sites along that western 360 corridor. A little history, in 2020, projections indicated that Winter Park Elementary School's program capacity would reach approximately 156% by the 2021-2022 school year, even before the anticipated opening of Mosley Elementary in the fall of 2022. With no space available for additional trailers, the CBG program at Winter Park was temporarily relocated, resulting in the creation of CBG sites at Clover Hill, Crenshaw, and Alberta Smith Elementary School. It was a large site of over 200 students, and it was relocated to three different sites. With the opening of a new second, or a second-new elementary school in the western 360 corridor next fall, both redistricting options presented to the community the available capacity at Grange Hall Elementary School to host full-time gifted services through the CBG program at that site. This realignment will bring programming closer to where those students live, help reduce transportation times, and increase access for families who may have previously declined participation due to that distance. This slide highlights the current sites and the current feeder patterns approved by the board in 2020. The numbers of students here reflect students who are currently in grades three through five from each feeder school. Grand totals for each site are given at the top shaded row of each section. Columns labeled E, just to clarify, those are students who are eligible for CBG, and the column labeled P are the number of those eligible students that are participating currently in the program. This slide displays proposed CBG sites and realigned feeder patterns in order to serve students closer to their homes. First, under this proposal, the CBG site at Clover Hill Elementary School will remain unchanged, with no feeder pattern adjustments. Second, as noted in the presentations related to the two redistricting options, students owned for Deep Creek, Grange Hall, Mosley, and Winter Park would attend the new CBG site at Grange Hall Elementary next school year. As you see from the large difference between those eligible for CBG and those who are currently participating, we have a chance to create greater access to this opportunity for students. However, with students with the current, with students from the current Grange Hall attendance zone proposed to attend the new site at Grange Hall Elementary, sufficient participation numbers at the Crenshaw site would no longer be present to sustain a separate CBG site. As a result, Alberta Smith Elementary would begin to serve students zoned to attend Spring Run in Crenshaw Elementary. Alberta Smith is located just down the road from Crenshaw, and this makes it a practical and convenient option for families in this area. This realignment also serves two other objectives. It ensures sufficient participation to support program quality while making efficient use of staffing and classrooms across the division. It frees at least three classrooms at Crenshaw Elementary School, thereby reducing the need for trailers, a change that directly supports the strategic plan, Objective 2.1, which calls for reducing the number of those modular classrooms. So, next steps on the journey. I'd like to conclude this update by just sharing some of the next steps that my office is working on. We are looking forward to working collaboratively with our community to revise the local plan for the education of the gifted this year. The current plan extends through 2026, and revisions will be developed and reviewed by the Gifted Education Advisory Committee throughout the year to ensure that it reflects both best practices and community priorities. In our last meeting, the chair assigned homework that the first two sections of the plan are to be read for the next meeting, so they're getting to work. We will continue partnering with our schools to refine and enhance the Inspire programs, ensuring that they complement the core curriculum and reflect new standards, and that they continue to provide students with engaging and challenging learning experiences that really cultivate their curiosity and creativity. Last spring, we began the important work of developing school-based gifted program guidelines through a series of focus groups. These groups created initial drafts addressing grouping practices, differentiated outcomes, instructional best practices, professional learning, and stakeholder support and engagement. We will continue refining these drafts and to establish a comprehensive guiding document for our schools. And then finally, our Gifted Education Advisor Committee will also continue its work in providing feedback and recommendations to strengthen support for gifted education across the division. And so finally, as we look ahead, our work remains rooted in that shared purpose: growing, engaging, and empowering our kids, and by doing it through high-quality instruction in our classrooms. And by reaching those classrooms, we strengthen teaching and learning at the foundation. By supporting the student growth, we nurture their curiosity, their creativity, their confidence, their achievement. By creating access to opportunities, we can open doors for kids. And next steps on the journey, refine our processes for tomorrow. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Foyle. Board members, is there any discussion? Ms. Hudgens?
Thank you. Thank you for this very informative, I mean, it kept going and going and going, fantastic. And I love how you guys not only focus on our gifted, this gifted segment of our population, but you also take, you realize that what you're creating, like with the Inspire program or whatever else, that you say, you know what, guys, everyone can benefit from this. And I love that this deep work that you're doing over here for this segment of the population that really needs it, you're allowing everyone to benefit from it. So I congratulate you and your team for that foresight. I just, I think it's really fantastic. One thing you threw out there, tier-two instruction, you were saying tier-two instruction is, could you just remind us what that means?
Sure. With tier-two instruction, you know, tier-one instruction is instruction delivered with, to all students, and tier-two instruction might be where the teacher utilizes, whether it's learning centers or maybe small group instruction, to really target some students, whether they have specific learning needs or that they need enrichment and extension.
Nice, thank you.
Mr. Pronto?
Thank you for the presentation, and I just wanted to thank you and your team for the work behind the scenes as we get ready to open up Deep Creek Elementary next August, and what that means for our CBG students here, and a bit of a shift that you went over as far as, for example, Crenshaw to Alberta Smith, Mosley to Grange Hall. And so it's a bit of, sometimes I understand, trying to put the pieces of puzzle together to make sure everything works. So I just want to appreciate you and your team, and thank you for what you've done to ensure that when that time comes, it launches without any issue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one quick question. If you could go to Slide seven, just more for clarification.
Let's see.
Yes, apparently, we're on the same wavelength. Okay, we'll see. So the total number there for 2024 to 25, the 8,325 students, is that all-encompassing gifted, like school-based gifted and center-based gifted?
Correct. That is everybody that we've reported to the state that is identified gifted. So we also have students, like I said, there are around 9,700 students that are benefiting from gifted. We also have students that we don't report to the state because they technically aren't identified, those are our monitor status students. So that's where we're serving like over 1,000 students who would have had a shut door. Instead, they get reevaluated again.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next, we have an update on family and community engagement from Mr. Smith and Mrs.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Board Members. Amy Bartalatti and myself will be giving the presentation. I'll kind of start us off and turn it over to Amy about midway through. We appreciate the opportunity to give you an update. We know obviously this board is very much engaged in our work through the community engagement piece, so this will become very familiar to you, but hopefully an update for the community as well. Just to remind her some of the things of what we actually do in this realm. The first piece, obviously, is supporting the full partnership of our parents, schools, and the community by building capacity of our parents and caregivers. The second piece is cultivating and showcasing our community partnerships. And third piece is creating additional partnerships and connections and opportunities for our schools by engaging external stakeholders. How we support our schools? We regularly support and look for their feedback with regards to the programs that we have, and also ensure it responds to the needs of families with regards to schools and their feeder patterns. We also serve as thought partners for our schools as they work to engage their families they know best, essentially through what the needs or families may be, provide professional learning opportunities that is tailored to school needs, and also work to align our engagement efforts with site-based strategic plans. As we connect to the greater community and half-school vision, we do focus on this engagement piece, but also collaborating with the organizations whose mission and values align closely to our school divisions. We're very blessed in that we have many of those partnerships available to us in our community, and also building additional partnerships with the business community itself. Just to highlight some recent successes, first piece is the programs for our families. In the 24-25 school year, the Office of Family Community Engagement, which is led by Amy Bartalatti, she has a team of three, expanded our virtual engagement opportunities to meet families where they are. Three highlights there, the first one is the Coffee and Conversation Series. The second piece is a Spanish-language series that really focuses on having Spanish-speaking content experts to inform and empower Hispanic and Latino families. And the last piece serves the What's Next Wednesdays, which is a monthly virtual event that provides guidance, resources, or help our families prepare for students' life after high school, with a strong focus on the college application process. This past year, as we've talked with this presentation over the years, we talked several years ago about the work to kind of realign this team. Last year, we talked about with the board that we're going to spend this past year really engaging in some of the data pieces with our programming pieces. So this past year, we worked closely in engaging with Qualtrics to capture feedback from programmatic features. Some highlights there you'll see is that 91% of our participants said they recommend our program to others, 86% reported developing a greater understanding of the topic after they attended, and 83% shared they learned where to seek additional support, all highlighting key focus points for the work that we're doing. As the board is aware, we hosted our second Alibertazo event in 2025. Neither severe rain or hail could keep our families away from this event, and we're super excited to have this event. We had more than 3,500 families registered, participation from every zip code in Chesterfield County. We had 30 community partners helping to support this event. We raised $19,000 in sponsorships, which ensure the impact of the event is sustainable and will happen over year over year, as you'll see, highlighting July 14 of next year to be the next event for this. The other piece we've done is revamping what was previously known as the Super Senior Passport, rebranded to the CCPS Champion Card. With that, we've been hosting a series of events to engage the community so they'll have their champion card, and also with that, obviously, really evaluating that programmatic piece. So with this card, it's a dynamic support system, so the benefits of that card will change over time, and working closely with schools and how we can show and share kind of those benefits for our community. And the last piece with regards to community engagement is really our work to connect with the multicultural community, working with our business and community leaders through our Principal Forum Morning Program, and then evaluating and elevating the role in support of our partners. As you'll see, we've been bringing that to the school board, passed several meetings, we'll be doing that again tonight, to showcase and highlight the work of our community partners. At this point, I would turn it over to Amy.
Thank you. Good evening, or good afternoon. So we do love data, and I will be the very first person to say, we kind of like going in with the flex of we had 3,500 people come to our literacy event at like the regional literacy meeting. But that being said, that just measures who shows, who shows up, and it's not just about families showing up, we really want to know what happens because they did show up. We're continuing to focus on how participation in our programming and events changed kind of how families think, what they know, and what they do next, their confidence and their agency, and this continual feedback loop that we worked so graciously thankful for our Office of Research and Evaluation, who helped us kind of find just some really quick succinct questions that could give us that information, so parents were not spending 15 minutes filling out a form. It's done in less than a minute, and that means that we're able to respond to it. And so that feedback, that feedback loop kind of helps us really drive not only how we're doing our programming or when it's delivered, but what we are sharing. And we're intentional about sharing that with our families, and so it is, you will often hear Kat, who leads our Coffee and Conversation team, saying, oh, you know, I planned, you know, this topic because I had 11% of the people that responded said, you know, we really would like to know more about co-parenting, this is something that we need to have resources on. And so they're seeing that response, and so people are growing in their likelihood of filling these forms out and letting us know. And so when they see their input reflected in what comes next, it creates some ownership and trust, and so this ongoing cycle informs our design, drives engagement, and that engagement then produces new data. And we're committed to getting better, but we want our parents to know that we're committed, and so we're really transparent in sharing that. We were talking about kind of, when we talked about it in our team, like what this work meant, and when we kind of thought about why our work in these last couple of years has been hitting different, a lot of times, and you know, everyone in this room can probably say they hear, you know, every couple of weeks, oh, we're just too big, we're just too big, as a division, we're just too big. I don't want to get smaller, though, because it would mean giving up the wealth of diversity of voices and all of the resources that we have, and so I think our work hits differently because we really work to make something that's so big seem so small, and oddly enough, it's happened, and we've kind of learned through it, through these virtual programs, because they're ongoing, they're responsive, and we have kind of a crowd that follows, and so you start to build these relationships. And we know that studies show that when parents have a strong network of support and access to trusted information, they report lower stress, greater confidence, and their children show stronger academic and social outcomes. So this community connection isn't an extra, it's a protective family factor for our families. The more families feel connected to each other, to schools and to us, the more resilient and capable they become. That's why this work matters, so we're not just running programs, we're building belonging, and you see it come out in the interactions that we have with parents, and that belonging turns information into action. It transforms kind of a virtual chat into this relationship. And so yesterday, Kat had sent me an email, and she said, you know, she had done a program, and this is from a parent that she doesn't know personally, but the parent is kind of a frequent flyer, attends these sessions, has reached out before and asked for resources. She's seen Kat kind of respond, and the parent said, I just want to share this with you. I don't know who needs to see it, but my son has Prater Willie Syndrome, and he's in middle school, and he made 103 on his algebra test. And if you had told me 13 years ago that this child with these issues was going to make 103 on the algebra test, I wouldn't have believed you, I was in such a space. And the Prater Willie Foundation shared it, and so she shared the post with Kat. And so Kat was like, oh, I'll contact Jenny's team, and I'll contact the superintendent, and I just saw that way because the parent was so excited and so proud, but just when you think about that sort of a connection, it's really making it small, it's making it, not a one-room schoolhouse, obviously, but it's making it, like, there's a touch point for people, and we really try to be intentional. And so how this is turning out, and Sean spoke about some of our programs, Coffee and Conversations, we're right now every single week. All of the topics that we're covering this year are a result of what parents told us last year they wanted to have. There's not something on the docket that was not designed by parents. And this year, we're ramping up the Cafe de Conversacion, which is basically a mirror to the Coffee and Conversation, trying to provide not just language access but expertise access in native language. The What's Next Wednesdays are coming up, and so I thought, oh, I want to have one of those series, Juan has one, and Ken has one, and Kat has one. And so I was talking with Dr. Jody Coleman about specialty centers and how you could demystify that experience because- demystify that experience because we have all the resources out, and we have the programs, and you know what they are, but if you don't have the kitchen table experience of sitting around and talking about the process and what you need to know. So we decided, let's just do a webinar, and we can invite middle school parents. And so in the conversation, like, we need to turn this into a series. Well, we had over 500 parents register for that first webinar. I had 13 pages of questions from the chat. Everyone was highly engaged, but it really kind of kicked off this series. So we have held our last, our last one, the follow-up. We didn't have quite 500, we had 165, but parents that were highly engaged around kind of building strong teams with your middle school staff so that way you could handle the rocky experiences of raising a middle schooler together. And so we're really looking forward to that, but that's what this engagement loop looks like in action. Families shape what we do, and we just try to be committed to showing up for them. We talked a little bit about last year, we launched the Champions Card. This year, we are in full gear. We actually hosted a signup event today at the Lifelong Learning Institute. We had 100 people come in that were not even members of the Lifelong Learning Institute, so we're really trying to choose these ongoing locations to where, when our seniors come in to do it, there's also a value add for them to get connected because that helps them. And so we turned some focus on to that great resource, the Perkins Center, the other community gathering spaces, so that way they feel more kind of connected, but then also creating experiences just for our Champion Card members. So we're going to be hosting a CCPS 101, hopefully bus trip, and then collaborating to identify some, so rolling out all of the musicals together this spring to, you can go and like kind of Broadway Under the Stars Chesterfield County Public School style, because we really want to transform it from just a pass to a platform for deeper engagement, one that keeps us, our community, connected and celebrates our students and reminds everyone that they're part of the CCPS story. And then finally, our business partnerships, we're just continuing to dig in and kind of around three key areas, aligning to what we're doing as a division, our strategic initiatives, so, you know, working closely with Katie Stokes' team to say, you know, what do those partnerships look like for you? Are there areas that we can go in and pull and connect you to people so that way you create the partnership, but we create the pathway? Working with schools to build their strong business partnerships, and then securing financial sponsorships for our larger division-hosted events. Last year, as Sean said, we generated more than $19,000 in sponsorships for Alibertazo, along with in-kind donations and volunteer hours. In addition to funding that we secured for that, we were able to secure support for our annual Student of the Year celebration in the Hall of Fame. But beyond numbers, these partnerships are mutually beneficial. Businesses gain meaningful visibility and purpose-driven engagement. Our schools gain resources, mentors, and community advocates. It's a perfect example kind of of how our Better Together philosophy, when schools, family, and businesses move in the same direction, we multiply impact for everyone. So that's what we try to do best, just make something that's really big kind of small and very connected. So if you have any questions or anything, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you both for that update and presentation. Obviously, engagement with our families and our students is first and foremost, and thank you for all the work that your team does.
Thanks.
Board members, is there any discussion? Ms. Hudgens?
I just want to congratulate you, your team. Yes, huge school system, and you guys, you probably said it 10 different ways just now. You're a tiny little team, and you're agile, and you listen, and you respond. Therefore, our people feel engaged, and our families feel engaged, and that's your heart, and that's what happens, and that makes our huge school system feel much smaller, and you're creating community. And every time you get up and talk about it, it warms my heart, so I hope it warms everyone else's hearts, too. Thank you for your heart for our kids and families.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have announcements, communications, and school board comments. School board members, are there any announcements or comments? The next school board business meeting will be held this evening, October 14, 2025, at 6:30 PM here in the public meeting room. If there's no further business, we will enter into closed session, which will be held in the PMR conference room. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the items for today's closed session?
It is my understanding that the school board desires to enter into closed session in accordance with Section 2.2-3711.A of the Code of Virginia, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and specifically under subsections 1, the Discussion and Consideration of Personnel Disciplinary Matters; number 2, the Discussion and Consideration of Student Disciplinary Matters, that would involve the disclosure of student records; number 7, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation; and number 8, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Members of the board, you have just heard the items requested to be discussed in closed session. May I have a motion in that regard?
Make a motion to enter into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Coker?
Aye.